Hi friends, welcome to I A C E roju. Target S S C C G L and C H S L English Session thirteen question paper ne chuddam. So question number one, select the option that has the indirect form of the given sentence, right? So direct speech and indirect speech only. So ok sir question chuddam, right? Ankush said to annadu, everik chappadu his friend. So of course said to anedhi tense low undi, past tense low undi. Anaga amikittelis kadha, reporting verb ante, comma to separate aindhi reporting verb antaru. Reporting verb past tense anukundi, tapakunda inverted commas low unna verbu change chayali. Verbu change chayali ati, than tense change chayali, right? Mari ikkidevundhi me per seevundhi. Mari me anedhi tapakunda yemavali, me anedhi might avutundi. Me anedhi yemavutundi, might avutundi. Adi already might undanukundi. Inverted commas to already might undi yemavutundi, indirect speech low kuda manaku mighte kanpinchari, right? So ikkada manakayam unda chuddam, right? First option low shoot undi, wood undi which goes wrong. Fourth option low kuda vellundhi, direct answer undi, M I G H T, might. Me enkaavali, mightavkaavali. All other options do not have what, might as though option, right? So kabati manaku C anedhi right answer avutundi, easy I A P undi, right? So okati gurthupetukundi, of course idandari mekittelsevundhi, ainti ainti, past tense undi inverted commas low unna tense change chayali. Okay exception undi, enta exceptiono, exception is what? Though the reporting verb is in past tense, inverted commas tense is not changed. Eppudu ante, if it is a universal truth, scientific fact, the sun rises in the east, right? So if you heat ice, it melts. Itu wanti vanni kuda, ivi facts avata, ivi change avakuda vani kuda manaku tellisu, right? So inkokati, inkokachi naa facts gurthupetukundi, i direct speech and indirect speech low. Meko indirect speech low, i points gurthupetukundi, right? Indirect speech low, subject taravata, of course, prathidantlo subject undi, right? Subject taravata, meko told kanpinchi, directga dattkanavadati, i optionno into mark pettindi. Indukanti, told anedhi di transitive verb. Transitive word undi, tellis kadha meko object teesukundhi. Ante, subject taravata, told ane verbu taravata, of course idi past tense, present tense yemavutundi, tell avutundi. Deenitaravata, object undalandi, directga dattvadale. Ante, told taravata, listener vinavad undali. Vinavad undi, ne object undi, ne ikkada idi correct avutundi, right? So ante noun or pronoun undalasinde, told verb taravata, noun or pronoun undalasinde, apurithesukundhi. So idokati mekhe help avutundi, and inkoni points gurthupetukundi, yes, ainti ainti. Iburu, me aipaiyidhi, might aindhi, might emayipaidhi, mighte undali, wood wood ayavutundi, vanni points kuda chusam. Inkoni points gurthupetukundi, ivi teesukunataravata, right? So piece of paper teesukundi, or notes anta clearga teesukundi, ivi chala help avatai meko, right? So inkok point kuda chaptan chudandiki. Epparina gurthupetukundi, ok sentence low manaku, anaga inverted commas low, meko must undi, emundhi, must. Must undi, eppuro inverted commas low, manaku must plus V1 undi kadha, leda must anedhi keywordga teesukundi. Ila inverted commas, anaga direct speech low nekada mana maatladukunedi, comma taravata, right? comma taravata, manaku inverted commas low must anedhi kanavadati. I must anedhi indirect speech low yemavutundi anedhi important, right? Reporting verb anedhi manam kontha rasinataravata, i must anedhi gurthupetukundi, right? Yemavutundanti, okasari had to avutundi, yemavutundi, had to avutundi, inkokasari yemavutundi, must ayavutundi, yemavutundi, must. Had to epparinti nama, compulsion, right? Compulsory chesalsochinappudu, compulsory ochinappudu, compulsory ane situation ochinappudu, manam had to annali. Ledhu idi general sense low, anaga, generalga maatladita appudu, must must gaaneyundundi. For example istan chudandiki, right? Ippunene annanu, I must go annanu, I must go, inverted commas low, I must go ani rasanu. Next, inkokas sentence rasanu inverted commas low, right? You must, you must write respect your country annanu, you must respect your country. Edhi general statement, sir, second one general statement, first one compulsory, right? Compulsion anedhi undi. So ikkada must yemayutundi, had to avutundi. I, ante, I anedhi, ikkada of course must, I anedhi den to change avutundi, mana subject to change avutundi, reporting dharav. Idi class room low manam neechkunene undam, right? Iburu for example say, he said I must go ante, he said that he must, or he had to go avutundi, he had to go. Adi, he said, he said, leda, I said you must respect your elders or you must respect your country annapudu. Ikkada must must gaaneyundundi, i points anni gurthupetukundi, right? So evenni help avatai meko, right? Next, so motthaniki, question number one ko answer yemavutundi, right? Might, of course idi okate second low answer chesam, okate second low answer chesam, right? So me enu chusamu, me might undali, prathia option low ledhu, other than what, C. So hence first question answer yemavutundi, C avutundi, next. Identify the segment in the given sentence which contains the grammatical error antunnadu, right? So avka ichchina sentence no four parts ka divide chesadu, right? So four parts ka divide chesadu, yep part low error unda, annaduguttunnadu, right? So gurthupetukundi, silver, gold, aluminium, etcetera, ivani yemavaitai, uncountable nouns avatai, yemavaitai, uncountable nouns. En ela chaptunarsarante, uncountable noun anni ela chaptunaro, ivi materials intamaivi, materials. Material nouns anta, material nouns annavi, uncountable noun category low badutai. Gurthundiga da, material noun mundu, material noun mundu, manamo material noun kadha, right? Material noun mundu, leda uncountable category nouns mundu, manamo rundu rakalika chustam. Hundred percent of material noun mundu, directga aileda anvada kududu. Hundred percent of aileda an, directga material noun mundu vada kududu, idoka point. Ait, mari the vada ochanee ante, anaga, a material nounu kachitanga, specific ga undi, specific ga undi, the vada ending, right? Material nounu specific ga vada thunnadu, daanigurinchya maatladuthunnadu. Avichchina, a nounugurinchya, avichchina kachitanga, anavurugunchya, edho point maatladuthunnadappudu, the vada ending. Ledhu, material noun generalga maatladuthunnadu, particularga yemaaatladatleeduka, kabati, etu ante article avustundhi, ikkada chuddam. Emannadu, the silver is a relatively soft shiny metal which is like by all. Ante, particular silver antunnadu, ledhu silver in generala, uncountable metal egada, metals anni, low haulu, anni kuda uncountable nouns avaitai. Ait, i particular silver, ante, i deshami yopka silveru, neenu konna silveru, athanu konna silveru, ila particularga yedhi ledhu kabati. Idi uncountable, leda, material noun in general articles teeskodu, articles teeskodu. So kabati, the anedhi unnecessary, simplega, silver is a relatively soft. Adi, the silver which I purchased in that shop. Ante, neenu a shop low ponna, e silver, particular aipaidhi, apurudda vada tavu gurthupetukundi. Ika megatayannii correct gaaneyunai, ela, soft anedhi yemavutundi, adjective avutundi, yemavutundi, adjective shiny anedhi kuda yemavutundi, adjective. Indukanti, metal anni nounno modify jastunai. Mari, entha soft gaundhi, entha shining gaundanti, relative gaundhi, anaga, idi addva bailtundi, right? Relatively soft, relatively soft, right? So ivitanta megatayannii correct gaaneyunai. Question number two low, option A is your right answer because the should be eliminated over here, right? Next, second question, option A is your right answer. Third question, select the most appropriate meaning of the given idiom, at a pinch, at a pinch, right? See, when you are at a pinch, please call me. When you are at a pinch, please call me. Ante, whenever you are in a bad situation, please call me. Whenever you are at a pinch or bad situation avustundi, whenever you are in a bad situation, please call us. When you, whenever you are at a pinch. Alani inkok pinch padam undi gurtundha, idiom, right? Emannadu, idi ekada appropriate meaning of the given idiom annadu, ante. To take something with a pinch of salt, pinch of salt antadu, pinch of salt ante, right? Ikkada rastan chudandiki. Take something with pinch of salt ane idiom kuda undundi, pinch of salt ante. Edhitivadu yedainachepitek completega believe chayaku, kontascope odilipettu, kontascope odilipettu, right? Do not believe others, do not believe, do not believe that, do not believe that it is completely true. Ante, edhitivadu chepite, idi motthamiga, ela chaptamu, yavide true, idhe hundred percent anedhi believe kaakunda, kontascope pettandi, right? Anavamto kuda chappochu, do not believe that it is completely true, completely true, completely true, right? So evara ina yedainachepina, motthanike true ani kadu, miru kuda, miyoka background checkkani, right? Kontascope odilipettali, that's when we use what, pinch of salt. If, if someone says something, ipudu context isan, if someone says something, I will take it with a pinch of salt, I will take it with a pinch of salt, right? So ante, I don't believe that it is completely true ane sentence low pinch of salt vada thadu. Motthaniki, at a pinch anedhi right answer yemavutundi, option D. Next. Select the most appropriate option to fill in the blank in the given sentence, right? So mari options prakaranega, right? Ichchina question low, context prakaranega yedhi fit avutundo chudari. Emannadu, Mumbai's Gwalia Tank Maidan, Mumbai yoka Gwalia Tank Maidan anta, is renamed as. Dhanni, malli rename chesaranta, emre name re named chesaru as August Kranti Maidan. August Kranti Maidan intavarko, okay? Indukku why, to pay homage, to pay homage, homage ante entendi, respect, etadi, respect, respect ani ardamu. To pay homage to the dash movement, respect anedhi positive word egada, respect anedhi ainti, positive word egada. To the a movement ko, okavlanti movement ko, ante fill in the blank chadu, ante, adi positive udesheme ivavali kadha? Indukanti, respect homage ante enti, respective vadamu, right? So okdani inkok, inkokdantor replace chesaru, leda rename chesaru, verey pere pettaru. Avuna, ait, mari deenikusam positive egada, homage respect mari chuddam. Reverseable anedhi, mari reversible antenti? Modhuti, de mali venakkuravadu, right? Venakkuravadu, purvasstithiki ravadu, right? Reverseable ante, turn something upside down, the other way round, turn something the other way round ane meaning avustundhi. The other way round, reverse avadamu, anantare kadha, right? Taravata, dainty, dainty ante, yedainaa delicate ga undaram, chala delicate, chinnaga undaram, delicately small and pretty, pretty ga kuda undundatta. Dhanni, dainty antaru, emattaru, dainty, right? Next, insurrection, insurrection, sorry. Pyovotal ante ainti, pyovotal ante crucial, very crucial ga unna, dhannevattaru, pyovotal antaru. Mari, insurrection ante, insurrection, selection antadi, insurrection antadi, resurrection anni kuda undundi. Mari motthanike ait, sorry, selection anedhi istanu first. Selection ante, deenainaa nilabettadamu, uprising antaru, or rising antaru. Selection ante ainti, risingam, erection anni kuda antaru, nilabettadamu antaru, right? Selection ante, yedainaa goodilo, manam yedainasstampaani select chestunamo antaru, right? So a rising antaru. Adi, insurrection ante, sir, opposite ante, ainti ante revolt, againest avadamu, revolt, rebel avadamu, etadi, rebel, revolt avadamu, right? So mari, insurrection ante, revoltu, againest avadamu, selection ante ainti, nilabettadamu, rising, next. Resurrection anni vinnara, resurrection, resurrection, resurrection ante, Jesus Christ ane, a context low vinumtharu. Resurrection ante, to return to life, channipayina taravata kuda mali purvasstithilo ki ravadu, breath ki ravadu, mone antaru. After three days of the death of the Christ, right? He was resurrected, ante, to return to life, to return to life, from death. Resurrection antaru, gurthupetkovali, right? So motthaniki okasari chustarakada, positive sense undi, mari ivani kuda, first mood kuda, negative sense unai kabati. Crucial movement, pyovotal, etadi, pyovotal. Question number four, D is your right answer, pyovotal. So with meanings tellste, easyga manam eliminate chesam, or right answer ke veli poyum, pyovotal, right? Next, fifth question. Emachchada chuddam. Select the option that will improve the segment in bold of the given sentence. In case no improvement is needed, select no improvement as your answer, right? So chuddamu, bold chesina padam ainti, wasn't they, right? So gurthupetkalsinde ainti manaku, of course, idi manaku question tags low adigadu, question tags model low undiga da, right? Your parents anedhi yemavutundi, manaku subject avutundi, live anedhi yemavutundi, verbavutundi, verbavutundi. Gurthupetukundi, manaku rundu models unai, enni models, rundu models. Basic level low, question tags ane concept low, topic low idi maatladatharikada. Right, epparina gurthupetukundi, ok sentence undundi, taravata, idi manaku ok short question, vittney short questions antaru. Rundu models untai, right? Ok sentence undundi, chivara ka ok short question undundi, dhane question tags antaru. Tag ante, small question chappachu, right? Mari, i sentence ante mekittelse kadha, subject plus verb ante, subject plus predicate antaru, dhani sentence antaru ne mekittelse. Ait, i sentence so, i sentence so, positive sentence ait, question tagu negative low undadi. Positive, negative. Adi, question tagu, mari, yepuru positive low undundi ante, obviousga meri chappari, idi negative sentence ainappudu. Negative, etu edhatela tellustundi sir, mari sentence, of course, no, not, never, seldom, little, few, right? Hardly, scarcely, barely, ivani words list undi kadha mana dakara, a padalu kanavadati, adi negative avutundi. Ledhu, normalga undi ane ante, positive anedhi chappukovachu, right? So kabati, i points mana gurtunai, ait, mari, formula ainti sir, negative positive bhagane undi, positive negative bhagane undi. Mari, formula ainti ante, negative ante ainti, helping verb raayali, taravata, not anedhi undali, right? Idi kudinchivaka padamga raayali, ante, helping verb, not, right? En apostrophee raayali, taravata, ikkada subject edu undo, a subject raayali. Mari, ikkada, manaku ikkada, helping verb plus directga, helping verb plus subject rastaisarpudundhi. Indukanti, ikkada not avusundhi, idu kabati positive, i matramu tellisu, chalo chuddam. Mari, ikkada sentence emichadu, your parents live in France annadu, idi positivea, negativea? Sir, positive esar, mari negative aichadu, bhagane undi kadha sir anente chuddam, right? So motthanike ait, first model nidi. Mari, first model low, manaku, first model low, manaku positive sentence undi, mari question tag negative. Sir, negative bhagane vada thidka, kani helping verb bhaga vada thadu, leda chakcheskovali kadha, right? So gurthupetukundi, manaku ikkada, helping verb, ikkada idi subject avutundi, ikkada main verb avutundi, yemavutundi, main verb. Deenlo actuallyga helping verb ledhu, was undi ne, was teeskovali, will undi ne, will teeskoli. Vanni helping verbs avata, ivi manam class room low telluskunundachu, right? But, gurthupetukundi, ok sentence low mekhe helping verb kanavadat ledhu ante, durupala helping, helping teeskovali. A forms help avatai, do forms help avatai, do forms annavi helping verbs, right? So ok sentence low, ok sentence low, helping verb lenappudu, leda meko kanpichat ledhu ante, gapkoni undai, durupalu, e rupalu, durupalu. Mari, durupalu ainti ainti manaku, do ledha does, comma, did, right? Ivi, help teesukundamu, eppu ait, a sentence low meko helping verb lenappudu. Mari, do ledha does anedhi, prastutakalanaki present tense nu chaptai, did anedhi past tense chaptai ne mekittelse. Avuna, right? Ait, ikkada live anedhi, V1 kadha, lived undi, past tense ayundedi, kani, live ledha, lives. V1 or V1 es undi, emantamu, present tense antamu. Mari, did anedhi, avusundamu ledhu, didi ok sahaim avusundamu ledhu, do ledha does, right? Does anedhi third person singular subject to vada tharu, do anedhi, other than third person single, third person singular subject kani anneetki, does vada kududu. Third person singular napre, does vada, ni third person singular kani vi do vada thamani, manaku tellisu. V1, V1 es gurthupetukundamu. Ait, ikkada your parents anedhi ainti plural. Plural kabati, mari deenki pronoun case yemavutundi, they avutundi. Ante kadha, subject leppudu kuda, pronoun case low undalani kuda mekittelse kadha, subject leppudu kuda pronounce. Your parents ko, your parents ko pronoun yemavutundi, pronoun yemavutundi, they avutundi, right? Adi, your parent yemavutundi, he or she avutundi, your parent ante, parents ante ainti, mother undachu, father undachu. Parents ante, mother or father, adi, parent ante, mother ainaa undachu, male gender ainaa undachu, female gender ainaa undachu, apudu, he she teesukundamu, right? Ait, ikkada plural kabati, enteesukunadu, they perfect gaaneyundhi, kani, idokati mistake undi, antena? Right, mari, manam do ainaa does ainat teeskoli, they anedhi plural. Mek gurtundiga da, does anedhi weight to matrame vada thamu, third person singular, inkka singular ki matrame, adi kuda third person singular. Singularo, adi kuda third person singular. Plural to etti paristutlo, V1 yes vada kududu, V1 chivara yesu kani, has ane padamga, anni kalpichakududu. E weight to, plural to, etti paristutlo undakududu. So kabati, idi, answer yemavutundi, don't they, yemavutundi, don't they would be a answer. Is this clear, right? So kabati, manaku, right? Adi, your parents were in France annanu, your parents were in France, your parents were in France, apudu, weren't they avutundi. Has teeska undundhi kadha, helping verb lenappure, var sahain teeskovali, yes? So inkoka chinnavishan chaptanu, if you have taken this writing, right? Please take this down, teesukunataravata, inkok point chaptanu, mekhe help avutundi. Idi, question tag concept low, right? So ainti ainti, yes? Yes, epparina chudandiki, idokati, manaku. He may, he may go out annanu, he may go, idoka sentence. Mari deenki, mari deenki, question tagu answer yemavutundji chaptara, sir, mere easyga, easyga nevundhi kadha. Meko, negative yemavutundi, meant avutundi. Meant he, absolutely he pronoun undi kabati, made he, this is wrong avutundi. Ante kadha, maamulga chustai ainti, idi positive sentence, a sentence so positive. Negative question tagu undali, negative bhagane undi, mari helping verb me undi kabati, made. Gurthupetukundi, ikkada meant he kadu, can't he avustundi, etadi, can't he. Indukku sir ante, gurthupetukundi, ikkada me anna, made anna okati, ela? Ippu, he may go out ante, athanu vella vachu, vella vachu ante, vella kunda undavachani kuda undi kadha? Ippunene annanu, he may go out, he may go out, athanu, valte vella vachu, ante, vella vachu, vella kaputundachu. Anduke, me lo ne, made untadi, made lo ne, me untundi. Anduke, manamo me rasina, made rasina, okati meaning avustundi, kabati, i optionno teesesthamu, manam simplega yemrastamu, can't he. Similarly, he may not go out ante, mali me he tapavutundi, yemavutundi, can he? Idi fix aipundi, right? Yes, so iprum mek logic arthamayateka kadha, ainti aalogikkupinene annanu, athanu, valte vella vachu, valte vella vachu anedhi antlo ne, vella kunda undavachani kuda undi kadha? Vella kunda undavachu anedhi kuda undi kadha, anduke, manamo i optionno teesukum, deenlo ne answer undi kabati. So kabati, manam deen to teesukundamu, can't anedhi, yes, can't. So motthaniki, fifth question answer anedhi, manam chusamu, be is your right answer, be is your right answer, next. Sixth question, select the most appropriate synonym of the given word, conquer. Easy veru, edhi, C O N Q U E R, conquer veru, C O N C U R veru. Pronunciation matram rundu okati undi, conquer ante, agree chayadu, etamadi, agree. Syonym ante, similar name ekada, agree chayadu. Adi, conquer chayadu ante ainti defeat, etadi, defeat. Alexander conquered many cities, Alexander conquered, apdugi spelling avustundi, right? Conquer ante ainti, agree. Inkok word synonym kuda undundi, right, accord anni kuda chappakovachu, eman chappakovachu, accord anni kuda chappakovachu, eman chappakovachu, accord. Accord anna, conquer anna, ainti, agree chayadu ani ardamu. So obviousga yemavutundi, right answer, correctga agree undi, mekita yenni ledhu, mekittelse kadha, separate chayadu, ante ainti ainti, divide chayadu. Protest chayadu ante, againest ga undaramu, right? Evara ina government ki againest ga protest chayadu, strike pete adu. Convinced chayadu ante, evanainaa satisfy chayadu, right? Perseu chayadu, nekavustundi, mekita meanings anni easyga ne unai. Syonym adigadu kabati, jagdatundadi, right? So ela jagdatu, instruction anedhi clearga chaduvaru, right? Ainti ainti, manam a nervousness no tension low, a directga answer delastati, kani, instruction yemadugutunnadu, marichpottundam. Anti, coolga, undi, tapakunda manaku benefit avutundi, right? Next question, identify the segment in the given sentence which contains the grammatical error antunnadu, grammatical error ido chuddam. Every man and woman, every man and woman in a family, indulo, in a family, the extra information about what, everyone. Mari, main information ainti, every man and woman are antunnadu, responsible antunnadu. Mekittelse kadha, are anedhi, etu ante subject low to vada thamu, plural subject low to are vada thamu, avuna. Kani, gurthupetukundi, eppu kuda, mekku every ochchina, subject, subject place low, each ochchina, gurthupetukundi, hundred and one percent of, idi singular yemavutundi, yemavutundi, singular. Vittini distributive, distributive adjective sulida, distributive pronouns antaru. So kabati, tapakunda, manaku, ease ledha, present tense low ease vada thamu, past tense low vas vada thamu. Adi, sir, ikkada every man undi, and undi, plus kadha, woman ante, idhar undari kadha, idhar undi plural avutundi kadha? Kani, deen ardamai ante, every man and every woman ante, pratyoka manu, pratyoka woman ante, ipunene, pratyoka man, pratyoka woman ante, okokkasariga okaru. Ippudu, neenu, andharu woman annanu, all women and, sorry, all women and man annanu, avuna, right? Of course, plural ait, all women and men avutundi. Ikkada, andharne okkasaari chepede, ok meaning, okokkarne okkasaari, prati antang kadha, prati antang kadha. Prati antene, okkaru, ok time low okare, one person at a time. Anduke, varni singular antaru, right? Chuddanke plural ayundhi, kani, ikkada, man kani, woman kani, ok time low okar guncha maatladuthunamo, adi ardam avustundi kabati. Manaku, every ochindi, each ochindi ante, tapakunda yemavutundi, singular, yemavutundi, singular. Singularto, manam are kadha, present tense low yemvada thamu, ease. So kabati, motthaniki, B part low mistake, B part low mistake undi, antena, right? Which contains the grammatical error annadu kadha, deenlo error undi, instruction clearga chadvandi, right? Instruction clearga chadvandi, sagam answer akkane delspottundi, right? Yes. Seventh question, be is your right answer. So inkokachi naa concept istanu, meko, idi help avutundi chudandiki. Ippudune yemannanu, each ochchina, every ochchina, adi singulara, plurala? Sir, singular esar annar, gurtundemi ko, okay, kani, chinni exception kuda undi, chudandiki, ipunene antanu. Each of them, each of them, each of them has a car, have a car. Sir, each anedhi singular annar, sir, third person singular to have ga, sir, mim neechkununnamu, makku tellisu, has, absolutely fine. Indukku, each anedhi subject avutunda, ante, vallo low prati okkari ke antunnadu, prati okkaru ante, okokkari ga antunnadu kabati, singular avutundi. Third person singular kabati, has vada thamu, have vada. Adi, i sentence chudandiki, idi star mark betkon raskondi. Adi, they each annam, emannanu, they each has a car, have a car. Adi, sir, ikkada each ka has ainappudu, ikkada each ka have etla itadi? Ikkada kuda, has akaavali kadha, kani, let me tell you, what is the right answer? Indukku ante, ipudu stress anta, deen midapadutundi. Indukanti, main subject ikkada yemavutundi, they avutundi, ikkada main subject yemavutundi, each avutundi, gurthupetukundi. So kabati, deen prakaranega verb vadashtam, ikkada main subject yemayipindi, they each, of course, they aipindi. Alani, they each have a car, we each have a car, we each have a car, each of us has a car, each of us has a car, right? So gurthupetkovali, i point very, very important, right? So ardamai etuka, right? Next, motthaniki, seventh question, right answer is what your, B, B anedhi antlo error undi, or should be replaced with what? Is. Next. Select the option that will improve the segment in bold of the given sentence. In case no improvement is needed, select no improvement antunnadu, chuddamu. Mari, bold chesinde ainti, by by, bold chesadu, chuddamu, right? So although a large section of people suffer by antunnadu, right? By, suffer to manam yemvada thamu, suffer ante, trouble, pain, to cause pain. Suffer to manam preposition yemvadaali, from vadaali, yemvadaali? Mari, suffering from annali, suffering with kadu, suffering by kadu, suffering to kadu. Suffer, emantamu, from. So easyga ne undi, te preposition ane concept low, manam telluskundamu, suffer from, right? Suffering from, suffering with tapu, suffering by tapu, suffering to tapu, suffer from. So question number eight, A, right? Idi easyga ne answer chesundachu meero, right? Next. Ninth question. Select the word which means the same as the group of words given annadu, one word substitute antunnadu. An aperture, ok aperture anta, deen koroko, for reducing or increasing, ainti, tuginchadamu leda, pensionadu. Deen i, the voltage of an alternating current. Ok alternating currenti, ok voltage nu tuginchadamu, pensionadu yemantaru? Sir, my inte mundu kanavadai, sir, transformers, emantaru? Transformers, trans ante, change, form ante, sorry, trans ante ainti, maradu, one anta, form ante, shape, etamadi, shape, right? Form antangada, ok rupamu antangada, shape, right? So mari change avadu, mari transparent ante ainti, gurthupetukundi, apparent ante, apparent. It is apparent that I will pass the exam. It is apparent that apparent, A P P A R E N T, apparent, apparent ante, clear, etadi, clear. It is very clear that I will pass the exam. It is apparent that I will pass the exam. Mari, trans apparent ante, very clear, very clear. Lucid ani kuda anochu kadha, lucid ani kuda anochu, emanochu? Lucid explanation, transparent explanation. Ante, itu vaypela kanavadutundo, deen venakkala kuda adi kanavadutundi. Trans ante, ok dagin, chinko dagari kuda kadha, movement kadha, right? Ante, clearga kanapaddani, manamo very clear, nothing but lucid antamu, leda transparent damu. Right, transonic ante ainti, speed, etadi, speed. Transonic antaru, right? Speed, right? So yevitanga, idi manam chaptam, right? A change of speed anedhi, transonicga chaptam. Adi, translucent anna kuda ainti, idi semi-transparent, etadi, semi-transparent. Semi-transparent an chaptamu, right? Deen ne pelucid ani kuda antaru, emantaru, pelucid, semi-transparent. So motthani ke, right answer emavutundi, reducing or increasing the voltage of alternating current, right? Right, so transformer, etamadi? Transformer, yes? Next. Select the most appropriate antonym, antonym ante, telska da, underki, opposite of the given word decipher, decipher. Decipher chayedam ante inti, decode chayedam, decode chayedam, ardhangaani bhaasa unto, dani decode chayedam. Le da interpret chayedam, emavutundi, interpret chayedam, le da decipher, of course, adhe undi ka da, right? So kaabati, marhi decide chayedam kadu, encourage chayedam kadu, opposite emavutundi, misinterpret. Justify chayedam ante, explanation ichkodam, logical ga prove chayedam, logical reasoning is what? Justification, right? So kaabati, manaku cleargane unnaai ka da, antony madigadu, misinterpret chayedam, oh. Adi decipher ante inti, interpret chayedam, le da decode chayedam. Eleventh question. Select the most appropriate synonym of the given word, similar name, adi, name ochiteto. Epitome, epitome ante inti, diin ikkada undartha unnaai, okkutomo, a perfect example. Evarena okka, evarena, manu, perfect unnadu ante, athani example ga thesis kavachu. A perfect example of elegance, an epitome of elegance antaru. Ante, evanaina okka perfect example ga unnadu, an jappachu, cheppinapudu, athani epitome antaru. Le da, rundavardhami entante, summary, etadi? Summary, marhi, e meaning to undu chudham, activity aite kadu, yes, essence, essence ante inti, summary. The essence of this story, the message of this story, the summary of this story. Apdudu, essence avastundi, emavastundi? Essence, essence ante inti, thakpari emu, an jappachu, dani message of the story. Summary ani guda jappachu, beginning ante telsu, initiate a, what am starting, collection ante, okka group ani, manaku telsu, right? So synonyme adiga eda ka da, right? Essence, ante rundavardhanke ikkada thesis kunnam. Question number twelve. Select the most appropriate option to fill in the blank in the given sentence, most appropriate option annadu chudham, right? From the time of Rigveda onwards, Rigveda time lundi, right onwards. Our ancient education system dash over the period, right? Dash over the period antunnadu, mana, inti, our ancient education system, ante education system anta, dash over the period anta, okka period lo, education system edo jarigintanta, fill in the blank kichanu. Marhi u focus chase in anta, edi ancient education system focus chase in anta, evanipaina, focused on the complete development, comprehensive holistic ante, puirtiga. Puirtiga, complete development of the individual, ante positive sense eh unnaadi ka da, eh chase in di, education systemo, okka aite, meaning ikkada chudandi. Focus on the holistic, puirti development kinda, chusin anta, okka individual paina. Marhi, enti, evolved undi, brought undi, right, travatim undi, checked, watched. So chusti, iti, focus ne inti, past tense, be to ichchadu, marhi watch ani ne inti, present tense aitundu, right? Inka, inka jappal ante, ancient education system, third person singular eh ta, ikkada watchers unna, chusunnavalam, but still it goes wrong, right? So chudham, aite evolved, brought, checked, chudham. Ancient education system evolved over a, brought over the period a, checked, right? Ikkada, examination eh jaragatledu, dani cross check chayedan ki, check chayedan ki, right? Okka development, develop aindi, progress aindi, ani udeshamto, eh padam avastundi? Evolved, progress, evolution antaru, evolution ante, eh, okka period of time, okka period lo, okka ninchokati, okka ninchokati, stage by stage. Or stage after stage, okka progress avutu undaram, step by step, step by step, a progress aayani dantaru? Evolution, evolution, so kaabati, progress le da, developed. Progressed over the, our ancient education system, progressed over the period, period lo progress avutu achindi, right? So a meaning manu thesis kunnam, easygane undi, meekata options eliminate chase na kuda, easy na aipai, right? So kaabati, cool ga konta, cool ga undali, nervousness aite, hundred percent thesis kavali, only then it is possible, right? So kaabati, question clear ga ardan chasekoda, hint ani dhi, hundred percent doruthundaba, hint ledi, clue ledi, varu questione, iba kududu. A clue ani dhi entante, manu nervousness lo chadivetapudu, anxiety lo chadivetaprenti, adi asalu clue ani dhi guda mind ga raadu, anni padhalu, okay laga kanavathai, vinavathai kuda, ala undadu. Chadivetapudu, okka word leda, rundu words, tapakunda meeku hint istai. A hint ichchina pudu, evarena answer jaygaluta, lekupote, meeku telska da, right? Next, thirteenth question. Select the word which means the same as the group of words annadu, group of words, seven outs, one word substitution antko vachka da, group of words nu same ga vachedi. Yes, a person who has given, given up, a person who has given up, he is a religious or political belief. Religious belief nu withdraw chase kunnadu, right, venakich chaseindu, or principle nu odhiles adu. Odhiles evan emantaru? Apostate, apostate, A P O S T A T E, apostate antaru. Iti chaala repeated ga, ennosalu, mana SSC lo kani, CHSL lo kani, chaala sali adigadu. Diin ni ela gurtu betukune, epraithne jastam ante, right? Ente, ivan ni marchi potuntam, ipudu ventarika da, next movement lonne, marchi potuntar. Ila marchi pokunda, okka mnemonics padati, chaptu untam, manam classroom lo, iti ela jeppanu ante, neenu okka saari vinanti. Apostate ka da, AP ante inti, Andhra Pradeshu, state ante, rastamu. Andhra Pradesh state, Andhra Pradesh state, vidi poyinapudu. Okka state nichi, Andhra Pradesh state vidi poyinapudu, konta mande inchesar ante, vala religious, vala matarpanamayana, nammakaanani, odhiles kunnar. Ayo vidi poyindi, okka saari kalsunnamu, AP state vidi poyindi, ipudu ho ani dhi, vida vottindi ka da, anukundam, right? Ante, manu, watini chukuda, ila gurtu betukovaachu, prati difficult word lo. Difficult word, asalu palakadani ke, ibbandiga undi, padhalan, etla mind betukavali ante, itu ante, vikoni, apply chase kunte, mind lo fixai putuntai, right? AP state vidi poyinapudu, religious belief, le da political belief nu, andharu odhiles kunnar, ala gurtu betukondi, easyga undundi, right? Ila, konni padhalu, konni veela padhalu gurtu betukovaachuma, manu meetii, chooda, chooda gane, first by podtam. Ala kakunda, okka technique to, meru gurtu betukunar ante, marchi pokunda undar. Inka, chudham, apostate is your right answer, meekata chudhangada, amateur, and amateur ante inti, unskilled. Etamaskill lekunda, undevada, unprofessional antari ka da, unskilled. We itanine, mal or right antaru, mal adroit ani guda anavachu, le da inept ani guda anavachu, emanavachu? Inept ani guda anavachu, unskilled, mal or writer, inept, unprofessional ani guda chappachu, right? Adi viti ki, opposite same avtai, inept, right, adept, adept ani dhi, skillful. Alani, adroit ani dhi, mali, skillfully, of course, adroit, right, adept, adroit. Marhi, dexterous anna kuda antenandi, dexterous, i points ani gurtu betukavali, dexterous. Connoiser, entadi? Ikkada rastanu, C O N N double N O I double S E U R, spelling guda chaala important, right? Connoiser anna kuda, okka skill unna vaadu, okka dantlo export an chappachu, ivi opposite savtai, ani gurtu betukondi, right? So auditor ante, meeku telska da, auditor ante, right? So one who reviews accounts, ante, one who is authorized to review the accounts. Accounts nu review chasei, marhi, a tax ani dhi, correct ga kathunnaara, le da ani dhi, dani, manu liable ga chesto untadu. Review, one who reviews the accounts to pay the taxes of someone or somebody, right? Accounts review chaseva, auditor enta. Next, atheist ante, sir, mak telsu, sir, atheist ante telsu, atheist ante telsu. Marhi, atheist ante, one who believes in God, these two, atheists, atheist ante, one who believes in God. Gurtu betukondi spelling, e, these two lo, T H E I S T, these two lo, e mundosavundu, gurtu betukondi, e, I munduradu. One who does not believe nasty kodu antamu, one who does not, one who does not believe in God. Devuni patla nammakaam ledu, devuni kan, patla nammakaam leni vaadu, devudu ledu, ani cheppe varni, atheist. Devudu unnadu, nammuthaanu, nu devu nianavi, varni atheist, moodorakam vallo untaru, eh rakamu? Asalu devudu unnadale, dani doubt padavalu guda untaru, ala ante, varni agnostic antaru, emantaru? Agnostic, agnostic is a person who doubts in the existence of God. Devudu unnadale, dani doubt, manu madugutamu, babu devu unnadannamthava, leedannamthavante, emav doubt unnadiyanantadu. Atu ante, varni exist, sorry, agnostic antaru, agnostic, doubts in the existence of God, doubts in the. Existence of God. Moodvargharamanishulu, namme varlu, devuni, nammanivalu, devuni, atheist, atheist. Ivi rundugakunda, doubt padavani, agnostic antaru, gurtu betukavali, right? Ipudu, chadivinatte, ante, gurtunnatte untaai, okka ghanta gaadu, okka padinimshala travatanee, vi marchi poye paristiti. So kaabati, ivan ni guda strong ga mind lo betukodan ki, meru praitnichal sindi, right? Next. Next, so answer aite telspindi ka da, ela gurtu betukavali, religious faith nu, give up chasevaadu, political belief nu, ila give up chaseva, ani vithigandha. Select the incorrectly spelled word, tapuga spellingu, enduloh, undi, okkate, okka dantlo undali, meekata ani, correct ga, ai undalsindi, ante ka da, right? So chudhamu, marhi, ikkada, manaku, temper mental annadu, emannadu? Temper mental, right? Travata, tazil annadu, tunnel. Temper, temper mental ante, of course, this is absolutely fine, T E M P R, temper. Mental, e, avastundi, M E N T A L, mental, right? Temper mental ante, temper mental ante, manaku general ga, yes, okka, iti, character antko vachu, eman ko vachu? Character, okka temper mental undal ante, okka character antko vachu. Tazil, tazil ante entendi, struggle, entadi? Struggle, tazil ante inti, okka struggle avadani, manu eh daina, tazil ante, okka struggle avadani, manu emantamu? Tazil antamu, double S untundi, tazil, right? Tunnel, tunnel ante inti, diin kaina, entry untadi, exit untanante, dantlo nichi, manu pass aipo vachu. Okka dagare enterai, inko dagare baitikira vachu, ante, diin ne, right? Passage an jappachu, passage, underground passage, eh daina, anavachu ka da. Marhi, treble spelling ententi, okkate B undali, treble, right? Treble ante, enti ante, consisting of three parts, threefold antaru. Eh daina, three parts consist aitte, treble antaru. Consisting of how many parts, three parts, three parts nu consist aite, treble antaru. Marhi, tremble guda untadi, treble veru, tremble veru, gurtu betukavali, tremble ante, tremble ante, shake avadamu. Shake aipodu, huneki podu untam, eh daina, question chooda gane, kotha question chooda gane, ara, inka idiraadu, ani dhi, okka nervousness lo shake aipodu untam. Kothadaina, pathadaina, eh daina kuda, manu vala nervousness unda kududu ka da, chooda gane, peaceful ga halochinchaa, apdre answers ani vi, manaku tarthai, right? So ila gurtu betukondi, right? So, be easy your right answer, incorrect ga adundu, ok B thesis estha saripotundi. Directions fifteen to ninety, ne vichchadu, chudham. In the following passage, some words have been deleted, right? Fill in the blanks with the help of the alternatives given, select the most appropriate option for each blank annadu, closest maadiri, ante kada, right? So passage ichchadu, le da paragraph ichchadu, dantlo, madlo, fill in the blanks, odhri peteyadu, context chadivit, a prakaran ga, options lo, eh di correct ga, fit avutundi, a fill in the blank ane, chudamanadu. That is the simple direction, right? So chudhamu. So actually ga, it is, neenu, yepudu chuptune, untanu, starting nichi, ending vark, okka saari chadavalsindi, quick ga, right? Laser time waste avutudi, magu telsu, mev direct ga kuni tricks unnaai. Adi apdvarke help avutundi, vaadu konta trap betaysadu, ani ante, tapakunda, ante, ikkada fill in the blank lo, ni, answer, ikkada vark chaduvute, ne, i point vark chaduvute, ne, ardamai, i situations, genno untaai, right? So anduke always have the habit of doing that, right? So quick ga chaduvute, practice mita, quick ga chaduvachuma, right? Sir, late avutundi, adi di, manu konta time undadu ka da, quick ga chaduvachu, manu basic level lonne untundi kaabati, chudham. So I hope you have read the entire paragraph here, right? Chudham. The Ganges is the most sacred river to Hindus, right? Atipavitra maynadi Hindus ku, Ganga, full stop. It is, ante, Ganga is a lifeline antunnadu, evar ki, to millions of Indians, to millions of Indians. Dash live along its course, right? So, live along its course and depend on it for their daily needs. Vala yo kav, Indians yo kavasarala kosamu, wati, along its course and depend on it for a daily annadu, ipudu chudham. It is a lifeline to evar ki, millions of Indians, actually ga, ikkada varkku, full stop betachu, edi, Ganga ani dhi, millions of Indians ku lifeline, full stop. Ante, etu ante Indians ku, ani dhi kuda japtunnadu ka da, ante, extra information istunnadu, extra information, ardam avutudi ka da. Indians gurichi, inka, additional information, le da extra information, meeku telska da, extra information ani dhi, yepudu kuda. Diin to begin avutundi, manaku relative pronoun, who to begin avutundi, le da whom to begin avutundi, le da which to begin avutundi, emavutundi? Which to begin avutundi, le da that to begin avutundi. Of course, what, but kuda untaai, but basically ga, yevit thesis kuntabu. Meeku telska da, who le da whom ani dhi, persons ku vaadatamu, which ani dhi, other than persons, ante, things ku vaadatamu, places ku vaadatamu. That ani dhi, thing and place ku vaadatamu, yes, right? Aite, ikkada, which ani dhi, hundred percent raakududu, antena, enduku sir, Indians ani dhi, manishulu, janalu, kaabati, which raakududu. Sare, marhi, whom guda untundi, of course, right, whom ani dhi, ikkada, ivanai ichchadu, marhi, whose guda untundi, whose ani dhi, possessive case antaru. Yavari yoka, yavari yoka aitai, whose book ante, yavari yoka book iti? Whose book is this, whose book is this, yavari yoka book. Ante, whose vaadali ante, tapakunda, manaku, em undali, dani mundu, dani travata noun undali, right? Whose book annan ka da, right? So kaabati, ikkada whose ani optionu thesis estam, neenu koni tricks kuda istanu, meeku help avutundi, chudham, right? So kaabati, ikkada chusti, manaku, Indians ani dhi, marhi, who ravalaa, whom ravalaa, ivaita eliminate chaseavandi, antena, right? Who ravalaa whom, yepudu ena gurtu betukondi, i point, right? Now not pronoun travata, now not pronoun travata, meeku, okka fill in the blank ganpinchi, le da space ganpinchi, direct ga, okka verb ganpinchi di. Travata, okka chinni, mali object ganpinchi di, full stop kanabaddi, of course, actually ga, now not pronoun, verbu object, edo complete sentence avutudi, complete sentence avastundi. Kani, ikkada varu, fill in the blank ichchadu ante, diin ne additional information introduce jestunnadu, annetu, right? Apdudu, gurtu betukondi, ikkada who eh vaadali, yepudu, iti person aite, of course, idhe aite, person aite. Gurtu betukondi, right? So entadi, i fill in the blank, lem vaadali, who vaadali, em vaadakududu, em vaadakududu? Whom vaadakududu, adi, second case. Entadi, ikkada rastan, chudandi. Second case entanti, meeku, now not pronoun ganpinchi di, now not pronoun ganpinchi di, marhi, u space avadiles adu. Travata, mali, subject place, verb place, object ganpinchi di, sir, of course, object ani dhi, diin kosame vaadatamu. Subject verb ganpinchi di, ikkada kachitanga, whom vaadali, em vaadali? Whom, em vaadali? Whom vaadali, for example, say, the person, I met the person, ikkada rastanu, I met, I met the person, continuation. I met the person, I met the person, fill in the blank, I met the person, fill in the blank. You respect, you respected. Apdudu, you ani dhi emavutundi, subject avutundi, iti verbai dhi, subject verb undi, kaabati, kachitanga, ikkada whom ka, who kadu, whom vaadali. Adi, ikkada chudandi, I met the person, I met the person, dash, respected, dash, respected. Dash respected you antanu, dash respected you, apdudu, respected ani dhi verbu ka da, marhi, dani ki, who respected you avastundi, simple logic, right? So, inka kuda, manam additional ga maatlaadukovaachu, but, manu during the course of time, inka manaku papers unnaai ka da, inkoni logicistan, right? Inkoni complicated goda untaai, but as of now, yevikonta, manu thesis kunte kuda, manaku. Next, so answer emavutundi? Who. Who live along its course and depend on it antunnadu, right? So it for the daily needs, full stop, next. It is worshipped, ante, the Ganges is worshipped as the goddess Ganga in Hinduism, okay, full stop. The Ganges is dash by severe pollution, right? The Ganges is damaged, heard, frozen, ta ta ta, gurtu betukondi, usual ga, by bike mundu, usual ga, meeku, verb vaadalsavusti, entadi? Verb vaadalsavusti, general ga, diin ne, V three form lo rayandi, eh form lo rayandi? V three, eh form lo rayandi? V three form, iti V one formu, iti V one formi, aite, iti V two, V three avachu, V two avachu, sorry, of course, iti V three avastundi, emavastundi? E anka da, frozen, iti V two avachu, V three avachu, ikkada V three guda, marhi, thesis kunne, vakashalunai ka da, marhi, ipudu context help chastundi, right? Chudham, the gap, ipudu grammatical ga chuskunnapudu, ivirundu eliminate aipoai. At the same time, context kuda, eliminate avali, but eh di easyga unto, adi a method nu follow vachu, right? So kaabati, iti manaku, V one avutundi, of course, i heard ani dhi, intama, meek telska da, H E A R, here, V one avutundi. H E A R D, heard avutundi, V two avutundi, H E A R D, heard V three avutundi, of course, iti kuda, manaku, con, grammatical ga correct avutundi, kani, chudandi. The Ganges is heard by severe pollution, ante, heard ante inti, vinadam, severe pollution cheta, vinavaddada, which makes no sense. E naita, etla gu, grammatical ga, incorrect aipai, au na, travata, frozen, frozen ante inti, freeze aipo adam, freeze aipo adam, ante, chill aipo adam, right? Chill, icy aipo adamama, gadda gattka pooram, ani antari ka da, freeze aipo indi, ani, kani, severe.